Follow this meeting order, if we could all stand for the Fledgled Allegiance, please.
Fledgled Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic or which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Free Biggs.
Uh, Madam Order, can we get a earl call of the members present, please?
I'm here.
I'm here.
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 Mr. Larson said he'd be here about ten minutes late, and Mr. Jessen is out of state, so he will not be here.
Okay, let's get to it. Indiana Dunes Tourism. How's it going, Mr. Larson?
Good, thank you.
Okay. You've got the Indiana Dunes Tourism budget in front of you. What is your pleasure? You want Greg?
He's talking, yeah.
Even spread out these increases?
Yes, and, you know, we're based on our cash flow, so if we don't have the cash, then we have to make the cuts internally.
It's all true. How many donations?
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. The ayes have it.
Great, thank you so much, have a good evening.
Thank you.
I was yelling at my dog. My dog attacked my cat, and I'm screaming like an idiot.
The poodle was lost at the bathroom.
Oh, my God. Oh, come to my world. And on that happy note, animal shelter.
I segue.
My dog backs me. We were doing so good with it.
We were?
Um, okay. So we've got some increases here in the animal shelter budget.
Yes.
Want to tell us a little bit about it?
Would you like to start with the hourly payroll?
I would, I think that's a pretty big chunk right there.
Yeah. I'd like an increase in that hourly payroll. I'm looking to attract employees that will share with us longer. That creates a better work environment for everyone, as well as reduces our training costs. A better skilled work crew in our animal areas is going to reduce our workman's compensation costs and insurance costs and that type of thing. We're trying to train all our employees in animal behavior, so they're better at those kinds of things, so there aren't going to be so many accidents. But if the constant turnover, it gets harder to do. It's a lot of time doing training. So if I can increase the hourly payroll amount, the $22,260, as well as increase the maximum hourly wage that I'm allowed to pay, that would help me get to where I want to be with more stable workforce.
Have you had a lot of work comp claims?
Yeah, not a lot, but more than usual.
Not more than usual, but it's a, it's a good number that we have every year. We have a lot of bites and things like that, so.
I mean, we talking three or thirty-eight?
Well, more than three, but not as many as thirty-eight. I would say, I don't know, what do you think?
At least, I'd say five.
Yeah.
Five's a good number.
Vicky, how much is left in her hourly right now?
She's spent about $130,000. That was whenever this is printed out.
Huh?
For the general, it's, go ahead. If you have the numbers, go ahead, I'm just looking at old numbers, so.
I'll see appropriation of $176,500. We're spending about $139,000. We can see about $37,000.
I'm not diverse in raising the hourly.
It does not, no. The transfers haven't gone through yet.
Transfer in?
Transfer, yes, into hourly payroll. I'm looking for a transfer of about, almost $3,000 to make it through the end of the year.
From where?
My supplemental fund. That's on the agenda for next Thursday.
Yeah, there we go. So, what's in the supplemental fund right now?
Um, there's a, there's a $5,000 hourly amount in that supplemental fund. That's our donation fund, and I was going to transfer some of our vet services into that to make it through the end of the year.
Bring up the supplemental fund real quick.
Do we have the budget on the screen?
Yeah.
Are you wanting to fund down?
Yes.
And today is $108,445.
Johnny just hit the jackpot. First of all, your name is not Johnny. Okay, so what comes, what do we start the year with on this?
In the hourly?
No, in the supplemental.
Oh.
And the whole fund cash balance of $150,000, what now?
So, instead of increasing the general fund for hourly, can we just increase the hourly out of supplemental?
Yeah.
Why don't we do that? I mean, I hear what you're saying about getting, I don't mind, and I'm with Bob, other than the Johnny hit the jackpot comment, I'm with Bob on the, you know, I don't have a problem with the hourly increase rate, getting, do you think it'll help you get, build a stay longer and stuff, but we're trying to be a little protective of the general fund here a little bit, so if we could move that increase down to her hourly in the supplemental. Vicky? And if you need more, come see us.
I will.
Glad to see you.
How many employees do you pay $15 an hour, part-time?
Um, not, there are none right now, because I don't want to get to that cap, but I have very, oh, quite a few at fourteen right now, so.
So they'll all move from fourteen to twenty if this?
Oh, no, 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 no. No, 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 no. I just want the cap, so if I have a really good employee, I can keep them.
Okay, so.
Okay?
It's up to, it's kind of.
It's enough too. I don't, I have no intention of starting anyone there.
Okay.
I'd like to keep my minimum at ten, and just go up to twenty. And that way it gives me a lot more leeway in rewarding my good employees and.
So by taking that out, does the rest of the budget stay the same?
It generally looks like it.
Yeah, so the number would be 536319?
No, there was a.
There's a couple others, yeah.
Oh, there is, maintenance agreements?
Yeah, there's just some smaller ones, yeah.
Oh, I see, yeah, sorry.
What's that come to?
Two thousand?
Um, yeah, two thousand in the general fund.
So you're capped at fourteen right now?
Fifteen.
Fifteen? Do you have anybody at fifteen?
No. Trying to keep them at fourteen right now. Didn't want to get to my cap, so.
Why?
Just wanted to be able to move them up a little bit if they were.
You could move them to fifteen right now?
Yes.
And you've chosen not to?
I have.
But you want us to go to twenty, which is a thirty percent increase?
I'm not necessarily going to move anybody to twenty.
Then you don't need twenty.
As soon as you give me this. I would like to have twenty, so if I have a good employee, I can keep them there by giving them more money.
What's it hurt, given her the ability?
It's just a big jump, that's all.
What?
Somebody's working.
But nobody's at the cap now.
Right.
So, if everybody's at the cap, or a handful that you want to keep would be at the cap, I could sort of buy into it, but nobody's at the cap now, and we're raising the cap. I thought you just said you didn't have a problem with. Well, I didn't say how far it could go. I'm fine. Should have burned up the hourly faster, though.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, nowhere near that.
So, what does that take our number to, then, with those other requests in cases?
So what's the other request, the total, if we have 536319?
No, it's two thousand.
Scott?
It's 538. No, it's fifteen.
Yeah, there's another.
Two thousand.
That's okay. Before we, I just want to know the number of these, it'll be 538319, so go back up.
Yeah, 538319.
Motion to approve the 538319.
Motion is second, affording further discussion. Hearing none all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it. Animal shelter fees. It was an increase to, how's that fund?
It's, yeah, pull that up.
Pull that fund up, Vicky, please.
So we scanned here with about $31,786, and currently have $30,431.
So it's, it's doing, it's doing okay. All right, so she's requesting an increase on her fees fund, slightly in the hourly as well. Fine. And training and ed?
Yes.
Let's take it, Joe.
It's an increase, but I, I have spent a lot of money trying to get our animal control officers and our staff better educated. Again, reduces costs all around for the shelter insurance and training.
Motion to approve the animal shelter fees. Second. Ninety-seven, three forty. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Animal shelter supplemental.
What's this now?
What's it now, Vicky?
Unchanged.
No, it's changed, because we pushed it down.
Oh, okay.
Is it now? Push that.
Push to twenty-two down there.
Yeah. Is it 112,260?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second discussion. Hearing none all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it. Animal shelter control. Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, any discussion on this one?
Where does this fee come from? Is this adoption fees?
No, this is the cities and towns.
Oh, okay.
And all of the cities and towns are in this now?
Yes.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it. Animal shelter control. Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, any discussion on this one?
Where does this fee come from? Is this adoption fees?
No, this is the cities and towns.
Oh, okay.
And all of the cities and towns are in this now?
Yes.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
How's the expo center doing?
It's really busy right at this moment.
That's good. You have a request in front of you at 593981. How's this, let's look at the fund, pull it up.
So right now the cash balance is $11,297. They are in a cash flow issue because of just reopening.
Go on, you've got our attention.
We are week to week, for sure. We have about thirty-five in Horizon Bank, I haven't brought it down yet. I've been doing that more often, just to keep that a little more padded, but it is week to week right now, for sure.
Okay. So you're going to make it to the end of the year with what you've got in there?
We hope.
Totally.
Coming back.
And you think this fund will be able to support your requested increase?
Um, I do, but it's also based on our revenue, so.
It absolutely is.
This is anticipating a really busy year.
Do you have a lot of things booked up for next year?
We do.
Do you have your business?
We've booked the weddings, yeah. We're doing really good for next year. It's just getting back on our feet is struggling.
Don't you have a couple fundraisers next year?
Yeah, who's running?
Who's not?
Trying to help, you know.
I appreciate that.
The medical doubled?
It did. The old assistant director did not carry the insurance, and then we replaced her, and we now have an event manager, so they both, so there's four total, when there was only two previously.
And if they're, if they don't generate the revenue, well, we know that story ends.
We're going to be knocking on the commissioner's door.
So.
I'll make the motion.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second on the floor, any other discussion? Hearing none all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it.
Thank you.
I T S. I T?
It's coming.
So maintenance agreements are up?
Yeah.
Just because you took over stuff from the sheriff, or what, why the increase, tell me again?
The access control on cameras warranty ran out in December 31st of last year. I guess what they assumed when I T took over, I T department took over the I T work out there, that the cameras and access control was my responsibility. So, I got a couple bills, January and February, that I ended up paying Videocheck for, so I asked Videocheck to give us a maintenance agreement, which I paid the $29,000 for last year, uh, this year.
So, this, this $190,000's reoccurring, then, we're going to have that every year?
Correct.
I mean, I see you have a $10,000 increase, you're requesting some furniture?
Yeah, our desk and everything down in our office are the ones they moved over to the courthouse when this building was built.
When do you think you're going to purchase that?
I'll have to talk to Commissioner about it.
Take the $10,000 out, and when you're ready to do that, come back and see us.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just, yeah, instead of putting it in the budget, we'll.
Deal with that when it comes.
Yeah, don't, don't, you know, just do with how you're going to do it, time-wise.
Okay.
Was this came with money in the sheriff's budget at one time? I don't know.
Well, that's my question, is isn't there some way we can cover some of that cost?
You know that?
I do, but if the answer is no.
No? No. What was, what?
Yeah, the old system that crashed, we urgently repaired it with the new system. The new system came with a couple of year warranty. The old system previous didn't have a maintenance agreement or any warranty, so.
So there was no line, there was no line item on any other budget for it?
Correct.
Can't push it into the recorder's perpetuation fund or anything?
Nope.
Westchester Library.
You know that by now.
You need a motion?
I do.
I'll make it.
Second. If a motion is second, so we're at, what is it now, Vicky?
Just the $10,000 out?
With the $10,000 out, but we're increasing.
1121052.
1121.
Right.
Oh, we understand. 1121052, if my math is correct.
So you put in the sixty back in.
I think my math is correct. Is that your motion, Bob?
Yeah.
And the second concurs. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. How bad have we hit the general fund so far, Vicky?
So far about $500,000.
Okay.
That includes mandatory.
And that includes what we did with the prosecutor's budget, right?
Yes, and that includes what you'll probably, more than likely, because you're required to do later today with Florida State.
When you, yeah, all right. All right, print shop general fund?
Motion approved, same.
There's a motion, and a second on the floor. How's this budget look?
How much have they used?
This is my question. Any other discussion?
Got it.
Hearing none all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it. Memorial Opera House.
Oh, God, there we go. Unplug Dan's mic.
I was going to say, I mean, but there's a pretty good chance I'll be in Miracle on 34th Street.
I've heard a rumor.
Just want to let you know, papers are going fast. Papers are going fast.
They actually are.
And I know there's been a request for Commissioner Blaney to also be in the desk to see if she participates. She cares about this, any or not?
Oh, wow.
All right, so, we've got a request of the Opera House, the number's 507449. Can I get an, a motion?
Make a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
That increase is based upon increased sales because of Dan's participation?
Yes, yes, solely that.
Yeah, so.
Stop it, would you?
They heard I was coming back.
Yeah, no. It is, though, because of increased sales. We are certainly much busier than we have been in years past, now that Memorial Opera House Foundation has really gotten behind us, and they're also hosting their own concert series. There's just a lot more happening in the building, so we need to make sure that we are.
So, you're confident, Scott, that this, your anticipated revenue will cover this 507, six, four, four, nine?
Yes.
You're standing alone right now?
What's that?
You promised to be standing alone?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I have another question, is anybody else?
Advertisement.
Yes.
I guess this is my question on a lot of things, and I don't know, every group is asking for more, is there a way to consolidate advertisements, so it can be shared somehow, like between different, no?
No, in this particular one, they're getting money from tourism.
Correct.
And so that money has to be specifically.
Yeah, we squeeze tourism for some venues every year now.
So it's a park can't ride on that, and a little, okay.
Parks are getting their own money for advertising on the same.
Well, just, as I keep seeing this, you know, I go to various places, and I'm like, why can't it be just, and that's why I had asked, you know, I mean, it's just.
Good question. So, yeah, so we, some years ago, out of the tourism budget, because they had such a large amount built up, and frankly, these sorts of things are tourism. I mean, they bring people into the area, and folks come from across the country sometimes.
They come from all over the world, you dare?
And you don't know where they're coming from.
Deals and subscriptions.
Yes.
That took a little jump.
Deals and subscriptions is still at 4670. Are you?
Oh.
Contractual?
Wait a minute, contractual.
Sure, I can explain that one. So if you look at 31702 Director Choreographer, that was at 38.7. We are eliminating that, because that existed solely so that directors and choreographers could be paid without a contract, which we don't do, so it makes sense, since we do contract all of our directors and choreographers, to move that money into contractual, run everything through that line item.
Sounds good to me. So again, this is a revenue self-supporting venue, so if they don't do it, well.
You're right.
Any other discussion? Hearing none all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. N O H I A C grants. Tell us about this.
Sure, so this is funding that we received from Indiana Arts Commission, this is money that we use for operations, either for new equipment in the box office, for any operational cost that we may run into. We have to run it through the county, per I A C standards, so we received the funding in October, so we don't always spend it before the end of the year, so we're just creating the budget, so that we don't have to come in front of you.
Motion is second. Motion, a couple of seconds, maybe actually two motions. Any other discussion? Hearing none all in favor.
That's off, that should be.
That's true, we had a motion, and then it was withdrawn. All in, I think, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it.
All right, thank you very much.
We'll see you.
Have a great evening, thank you.
Commissioners, general fund. Can we talk about this one, Scott? What's the increase on this?
None.
Why am I, sorry, did you?
Well, we fixed this on the screen, so on the screen, the book may, your.
The book's wrong.
The book's wrong, but what is the screen? I believe we're zeroed out, right?
Yes. Zeroed out?
Not zero, but we're even.
So it's the same number as last time, there was some, all right, you're right. So, I went in and met with Scott today, there were a couple of clean-ups, a couple of errors and things that needed to be moved around a little bit, because it was incorrect in the proposal. It's been rectified today, and so the general fund proposal is the same.
And that also takes into consideration the last time, I believe in May, and then also in September, when we reduced the salary on the, one of the janitorial issues, so this salary number is correct to date.
Do we need to add some kind of security line item to Commissioner Biggs? Do we need to add a security line item for Commissioner Biggs?
Do we want the police on call at all times?
We are, we are fine without that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Just making sure, you know.
Mr. Biggs can handle himself.
That's right.
You are.
I saw that in the video.
The whole world has seen the video.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it. Ninety-six oh two, Commissioner, twelve thirty-three, general fund budget.
That is the, that is the P P B that we do for the federal prisoner money.
Motion.
Approved. With a motion, is there a second on the floor, 374700? Any discussion? Hearing none all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it. Lit plans. On this one, we also made some changes. One, longevity is backed in lit. Also, as you may recall, we moved the election equipment payment into lit the other night. So what do we have in front of us here? You have the corrections in there?
Yes.
You want to move the maintenance agreement?
That's correct. So what is our, with all those corrections, all those changes, what's the new number? Is it the 6383560? And you advertised this high enough to do that, right, Vicky?
Yes.
All of it, all of it, all the stuff we, it's all okay.
In this one, yes.
What is your, let's get a motion on the floor first.
What is it, the?
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we got a second. Discussion.
So what has changed, Scott, besides adding longevity and?
Well, putting it back in, it was there last year.
Putting it back in, and the.
They did a little bit when on, Vicky, what do you have up now?
Some maintenance agreement change, right?
No, 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 I mean, but are you, is lit all one big blob up there, or is it, it broke out? All right, so, all right, so on the facility side of this, we moved some money around, but kept the number the same, so I believe if you look at 22200 uniforms and clothing, that went from 3,000 to 5,100. Household embedding went from 35 to 43. Um, Small Tools went from 5 to 8, but then we reduced, and then also the maintenance agreements reduced from 70 to 25. And then the math difference to keep that, those numbers the same, got rectified in 23500, the building maintenance supplies, so ultimately this portion of lit that's going to the facilities budget is the same number that it was last year, with some minor moving based upon needs of, I believe 19 was 942174, and this year it's still 942174 from that part of lit.
Yeah, and I'd ask the commissioners to do just that, to kind of, if they had some changes or increases, to try to find it elsewhere in their budgets and move it around to get the bottom line as close to what it was as possible. So I think that's.
So that's that. The other part of lit is the bond payment, that's set. That's the 2, 2,243,640, that's the same, that's in there. The last part, the, what I call the commissioner's portion of lit, that, the medical insurance, DocuWare, um, I added 139,000, the power. Um, we also added, um, a little bit, we added 150,000 to the redevelopment commission to take that number up, and then a little bit to the contractual line.
What do we have built up in the economic development commission, tell me again?
It's around 12, 125?
We've got some projects on the horizon that came up at our last sum that you might, that you were interested in actually, Jeremy, in your district, so.
And I do believe, Dan, in the next couple of weeks, the RDC's meeting to. To, yeah, right, to discuss that maintenance facility shed in South Haven, that's, we're getting close to that.
Uh, okay, any other questions?
So we put the maintenance agreement for the, is that still in there?
Yes.
For the election equipment?
Yes. It is in there, right, Vicky, I think I just saw it.
Yep, it's there.
Scott, we had a brief discussion earlier.
Well, if that's, that's where it's going, that's where it's going.
That's where it's going.
Is it the right place for it?
Mm-hmm. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, the ayes have it. CCD.
I believe this is the same.
Looking at the screen. Yeah. He made some, he might have.
I made the change, the data processing line got confused because there was an additional into it this year, and then that additional got added to last year's appropriation, and then that number got moved over. So the actual 45100 should be 293301, which then brings us back to what we were last year.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, the ayes have it. EMS, 1151.
Uh, this is being requested at 75.
Reminding what we do on that.
This is the money that comes back from Porter on the ambulance contract that goes into here to take care of the ambulance barns. And so the 75 is basically what's in there now, plus what will be coming next year. So that's why I didn't leave it at 242, so it's just not there.
So the number 75,000.
No, it's true.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, major moves, 1172, nothing there.
Should be zero, it shouldn't be on the list anymore.
So, you know, why are we still, why do we still address this budget if it's zeroed out?
Because when it was turned in, the contractual line on 3950 was brought over for the 92954, so we turned something in that didn't have a zero, and that's one of the things that got corrected to that.
Alright, we don't need to take any action on that. Parking Garage Fund, 4017.
Same as last year.
Move to approve.
Motion and a second at 14, oh, second, motion and a second at 145. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Ayes have it. Wildlife Management Donations.
Donation Fund for the Arizona Wildlife.
Move to approve.
I'll second. Motion and a second on the floor, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Revenue Bond Project Fund, 481. I'll make a motion.
So this afternoon, I looked at what was the cash balance compared to what was approved at the commissioner's meeting yesterday, read the tea leaves on what we think will be approved in November and December, and this is as close to the guess that I have, that we're going to have about 9 million in there when we start January, and so that's why I budgeted not. Obviously, if there's 8.8, then it's, there's only 8.8 in it, so.
I'll make a motion. If a motion is a second. No, well, good, yes, but close. Any, any other discussion?
I was talking about it.
Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Hospital Liability Fund.
So this is the trailing liability fund from the sale of the hospital. We had one case last year, that case went to trial, we won at trial, it's now on appeal, we've answered the brief, and we're hoping for this to be over.
Sure, one's got a few bucks left in it, which we can deal with next year.
Right.
If there's no need for it, we can.
Right.
Get the ten of us together and make some decisions.
Yeah, we just, I left it at 50, just.
Move to approve.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. And just to refresh everybody, this money, we had a lot in there because we had unanticipated, oh, we had anticipated unknown possible trailing liabilities from the hospital sale, so we're just about to the end of that road. Uh, this is sort of out of the sale proceeds, so the principle, so if we, the excess that's left in there will require a 10, a 10 vote to spend.
Correct.
We'll have to be nice to the commissioners for a little while longer.
How many trailing liabilities, which is code for lawsuits, are left?
Just the one, the one.
Without the one?
The one that went to trial, we won, it's now on appeal. Boom.
Okay.
Don't do that.
So, yeah, so next year, the 10 of us can have a discussion on what we want to do.
Right.
Uh, I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Hospital Interest, this one's depressing.
So after talking with Vicky today, she was comfortable at 175, so.
I was at 170.
I was at 172, so 175 is, the auditor won.
There's a brain trust.
Well, that's a good officer statement.
Not having it at the top of the table, don't you, don't you? That gives me a sense of comfort.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second on the floor, and understand, this, this fund is drying up, and we pay a pretty good chunk of insurance out of this, so we're going to have to have a discussion a little bit about how we're going to make up shortfall, at least take some steps toward that. So the number's at 175,000, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, ayes have it. Hospital Sale Proceeds.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, ayes have it. Cable Franchise Fund.
Same number.
Move to approve.
A motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Ayes have it. Foundation Budget Fund, this one's going to require just a little bit of discussion. So. Let's scroll way down. So the things that you know that are the same, we, you know, we budgeted 450,000 to council on aging, 600,000 to attend the youth services, so for anybody that says that we haven't been using this funding for any sort of social services, is mistaken.
Not true.
Uh, Opportunity Enterprises gets 50,000, that's the same. We pay some insurance on this. Scroll on. So last year, we budgeted 940,000. One thought that I had was, since we have a $380,000 shortfall of our Hospital Interest Fund, that we could roll, now, again, we're trying to read the tea leaves a little bit with our insurance, roll a couple hundred thousand into this fund to keep it out of the general fund. Maybe we need it, maybe we don't. But I didn't want to budget against our general fund if we didn't need it. So that's why that number. Everything else, I believe, is the same.
It is.
Any, can I get a motion on that of some sort?
Are you looking at rolling that money in there, Dan?
Yeah.
No motion.
I just need a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Now, this isn't enough for the insurance, but it's a good, it's a good chunk. Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, the ayes have it. As it's, as we sit here today, our foundation, we're looking good in the foundation for the year as we sit here today, but today, December 31st, we'll have to wait and see. Hopefully.
What's in the news?
States, statewide E911 Fund.
Good evening.
How's it going?
Evening.
So far so good, first day of meeting.
Alright, hey, how you doing, Matt? Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
So we have this E911 Fund at 2428250. What is your pleasure? We have a motion on the floor, so this number's down a little bit. We took salaries down, or we moved the salaries to somewhere else?
Uh, we lost, uh.
Oh, we reorganized.
We reorganized at the top.
I'll second it, you get a second, Dan? Yes, okay. I think we, if you want to, yeah, so, uh, that's part of that reorg situation.
Yes.
We didn't replace.
Could you ask the auditor to see how that fund's doing?
How is that fund doing? Vicky?
So the only bright side to being understaffed is that fund grows, so.
Right.
It's, it's healthy, so that's, 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 that's good.
It's good. Uh, anybody have any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, let's go to the, uh.
You've done, you're over the way down.
They've done all three of those.
You're down to OE.
All four of them, all five of them, we're down to Opportunity Enterprises.
OE.
Opportunity Enterprises.
That was easy.
Anyway.
Well, did we do 4922?
All those were the foundation budget.
That was all in the.
I don't want it that way. All of us to say, that'd be the other ones we just done up in the foundation.
Okay.
How's it going with Opportunity Enterprises?
Working well, thank you.
Very good, very good. I don't think we've met before. Hold on a second, why don't you introduce yourself to the crowd?
Sure, good evening, my name is Neil Samahan, the new CEO of Opportunity Enterprises as of July 1st of this year.
Well.
Thank you, been affiliated with the organization for about eight years. When I moved to Valparaiso, um, my first affiliation became as a parent of a child, as a client of OE. Later became a member of the board, and then.
Here you are.
Here I am today.
Alright, so we've got a requested budget here that appears to be the same. What's your pleasure?
Motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Uh, Porter Stark.
Our annual report.
Hi.
So if we can just kind of pound through the budget here, so we have a, this is one of those that, um, we get our levy increase to handle this, correct, Vicky? If we were to not deal with this, our levy would just be reduced. So it doesn't, so.
Make a motion to accept.
Is this, is that levy inside our cap or outside, Vicky?
Oh, it's outside.
It is outside the cap.
In a sense, we, whatever we give Porter Stark, we give it back, our levy.
In the, okay.
And so we, if we give it less, we have less of the levy.
Right.
So when you talked about our, what you felt was a comfortable increase, it included this?
Yes, yes, because it had, that's part and parcel of what I'm.
Well, it is part of our cap.
No.
No.
No, she, that's a different issue, she, we were asking her how much do we think.
Well, I mean, it's part of our growth factor.
It's part of our growth factor.
Okay.
For lack of a better term, a big number.
Move to approve.
We have a motion at 2406074. Is there a second? I'll second it to get to discussion.
Fire away, Bob.
Round numbers, we have a million dollars to grow. This is 21% of it, round numbers?
We've got 1.1, and this is.
20%.
20% of the issue. But if we, if we were to not do this, our levy would be, we wouldn't have 1.1, we'd have 900.
Right, okay. That's why I'm making sure, yeah.
When we go through the levy calculation, then we have to add that certain amount, one is Porter Stark, one is Opportunity. Yes, we do.
Potatoes, potatoes.
Yes.
Tomatoes, tomatoes. Let's call the whole thing off. Uh, what about, uh, well, we'll get to that in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Chip, Porter Stark's good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for the report, too. Um, you guys have any questions of whom, who she leaves? Nothing? Let's talk about the general fund. Vicky, that's you.
The general fund, the fund.
So where are we?
Right now.
Valpo.
Good call, Bob.
The amount added to the general fund so far?
Yes.
Which is redundant.
Sort of.
On second reading.
Yes, 497,309, that dollars include Porter Stark, because it's a.
Alright, so, awesome. So we have gotten through second reading, you've heard the auditor tell us that we've increased thus far just shy of a half a million. Includes mandated increases, we haven't gotten really to align share of the many other increases that folks had. We haven't had a discussion yet on raises in wages, because we don't know, still don't know how much of those other increases we want to grant. So how do you guys want to handle phases?
So what's that left in, the rough 600 and some thousand dollars?
I'm having 604,691, and that includes the increase to the.
Just 3% raises, do you have that off the top of your head? Or on paper?
Yes.
I'd like to suggest we take the prosecutor down 10,000. I'd like to suggest that we revisit the clerk's budget.
Hold on.
Recorder.
707?
Yeah, 168.
168, what'd you say we had left right now in the general fund?
We had a motion there on that.
604,691.
604.
What are you doing?
I just seen the difference, 3% raise.
Oh. Yes, sir. Would you like a motion on the recorder's perpetuation one? Well, I think maybe.
You want to open it up now?
Yeah, let's, let's, we can, we can attack this tonight, or we can attack this on Monday. Well, if we do it tonight, it gives us a chance to run more half. Yeah, but we're going to, it's, I anticipate us going back, because we have, Vicky, we have, we have final reading right now set for October 17. Uh, what we have will be called raises in wages on October 14. I anticipate that we will go back and change some of the things, at least a couple of the things that we did at second reading for third reading. How much advance notice do you need to do that? To rerun the numbers if we change, like, so, you know, we approved the prosecutor 200 and some thousand increase to the general fund, we said now we're going to make 100,000 dollars less. That would be a change that I would.
Right, because we're dealing with personnel, we would have to go into the 144, but it can take, but anyhow, how many changes?
We do it Monday, Monday by Thursday. Yeah, if we did it on Monday, would that be enough time for you to anticipate? Here's what I would.
No other change.
Well, that's.
So here's what I think we should do. I think we should come here, I think we should come here Monday, I think everybody should take a, we've just finished second reading. I think we should all take a few days to look and kind of absorb what we've done, take another look at the things that we've done on second reading, take a glance at the requested increases, come here Monday, make the final tweaks to what we did on second reading, because I can think of a couple of changes I'm going to suggest were out of the gate. And, um, yeah, and then we can talk about what's left for increases, we'll have some general idea, and we can direct the auditor to prepare a final reading. Is everybody okay with that? I can think of three budgets right off the bat.
Exactly.
Recorder, clerk, surveyor, prosecutor. We're going to get it, we're going to get back in there, because there's a few, I mean, I've had, much like many of you, I've had some, some contacts, or people contact to us, or me, and say, hey, why did you do this on second reading? Why did you do that? You didn't need to do this, you didn't need to do that, and I want to do some follow-up on that, uh, so we can like talk amongst ourselves and put our, and put our thinking caps on, come up with something that works. Finalize that on Monday, and send it on down the line for final reading.
So do we need to let all the departments know, maybe they should show up on Monday?
Just in case.
Just in case.
That might be, yeah, here's what I.
They're going to start chopping their. They're gonna start chopping their bodies.
Guys, here's what I, I thought we would come on final reading and have at it, but I think it's more, it would be easier for the auditor if we came on Monday, and finished, so that all the listening to, going through all the requested increases, if we want to do all that, or if we just have made a decision, come here Monday and see, this is what we're doing, these are the changes we're making on second reading, motion second, boom, Vicky, put it together, and let's roll. But whatever happens, I think it's gonna happen on Monday.